Patricia Pinto is councillor of ward number seventeen, Panjim Municipal Council. You mentioned that you rejected a draft plan. You also attached a copy of the petition of Goa in Bombay. So as far as beach maintenance and cleanliness is concerned, what are your specific suggestions to the committee?
As far as beach maintenance, I feel that tourism department, municipality can do its job. And besides, I have spoken to other NGOs and the people of their area, they are also ready to assist. So I don't see why we cannot manage it, we can.
No, but do you know something that as the committee has gone around and did three, four inspections, before even bringing the problem to the notice of the government, I don't think people have faith in government authorities. Right now, whether any NGO or any councillor has conducted any exhaustive survey to document and pinpoint the hotspots of this walking of the drainage or garbage, because unless such vigilance is there, I don't think, what is the position? Means any report has been filed by you or any councillor or any.
No, as far as drainage is concerned.
Drainage and garbage, these are two things related to cleanliness and sanitation, whole area, Kampal to Cabo.
As far as drainage is concerned, for the past, I mean, last two years, I have taken photographs of all the areas that were blocked, even before I came in council, I have all that here. Braichma, Altila, Kampal, Karanzale, everything. So all the photographs are here, I have even, because there is no drainage plan at the municipal council. The old plan that was there seems to be lost. I even prepared.
They lost the plan?
It's not there, nobody has it.
What is the proof? Means what?
It's not there, no one has a plan.
No, but they had prepared a plan and they lost it.
There was a plan.
For this area or whole city?
No, no, for the whole city, Panjim area, there was a plan.
How old was the plan?
I believe there was a plan right up to nineteen seventy, there was a plan. After that, nobody knows, in fact, I inquired, there was one, there is a man who said that the plan was taken to the secretary once for a meeting in the seventies and it never got back. So if you ask anybody for a plan, they don't have. So I tried preparing a plan, which I have prepared of the drainage, maybe it might not be correct, but checking all the outlets and wherever the drains are, I have prepared a plan of my own. So as far as.
You can put it on the record of the committee, what the plan was.
But I need this plan back.
You can send a copy later. Yeah, it should maybe be recorded that, now who has prepared the plan you said? PMC has prepared?
PMC.
So but PMC has a separate plan, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, but this is, I have, I started it earlier with the PMC. But this is only of Panjim city that I have prepared. In Karanzale, there are about six, seven outlets. That area is flooded because most, yeah, most of the outlets are blocked. Even I can show you a photograph now of the science center that has come up. When you see the photograph of the drainage system that is there. This was the drainage outlet from the science center, but those are the pipes they have kept. I don't see what water is going to.
Photograph please.
Yeah, so everything has been blocked, buildings have come there, the main outlets are all blocked. In fact, this ODP should give you the drainage lines, sewage lines, that nothing reflects in the ODP.
You can leave the photograph, you can, at the end of the hearing, I will take them sequentially.
Yes.
You can leave, please, I have the photograph, but it wasn't like this.
No, I have negative, you can keep it. Even as far as sewage lines are concerned, if you check this gazette notification, the PDA under section eighteen or whatever, should earmark location for sewage treatment plant and demarcate underwater drainage network in the ODP. There's nothing there in the ODP, if you see, this is what is there in the outline development plan. That ODP is not a complete document.
The committee noted with concern the observation made by Patricia Pinto, that the location of sewage treatment plants and underground sewage network not shown on the, in the ODP for the PMC. She referred to official gazette, Government of Goa, series one number fifty, tenth March two thousand, page seven zero five.
In fact, with the.
So the general feeling, I will ask you a basic question, general feeling is that the authorities, they had been called separately here and they were all shown the photographs and they were asked to perform certain things. In terms of this service provider or whatever it is, the general idea is that the government authority on which people have been depending so far, they have failed to perform their duties, whether it's drainage, sanitation, sewage disposal, garbage, this one because you see such photograph, there are lots of bottles and others, this one scattered along the same news, understood? Even citizens have not, you mean, consistently been after these authorities to take action in the sense that, and tourism director tourism admitted that this has been going on.
In fact, yesterday, we had a meeting regarding these bottles and small scale industries were present where they had agreed to take the bottles back for fifty paise.
These are whiskey bottles, glass bottles. There are lots of these. And basically, you see the question is that, what is so special, you think, is about Miramar beach? Means could we have one separate isolationist policy, exclusive policy for Miramar beach? And another policy for Kalangut, Kolo and other beaches in.
What I feel is Miramar beach, you cannot compare it to a beach like Baga, Kalangut and places like this. This is more a city beach of the residents, you know, to go and it's not like a beach, even if you notice, none of the residents have put up small shacks and hotels where tourists come. This is one beach which the city has where the residents, after they are stressed and all, can really go and relax on the beach. And I don't think it should become a beach like Baga and Kalangut, that's not what we want. We just want a nice clean beach to relax on.
No, but what you say then, what you say that means you can, the mess that you can see on the congestion, the type of activities, without any service provider, the beach has been already privatized, as you can foresee that. Means this type of traffic, then water sports activities, unregulated. Means could you within a same democratic system have one law for Kalangut, Baga beach and another exclusionist law, isolationist law for Miramar beach? Saying that, you know, you can't, because either we should have a concrete policy for all the beaches, they are equally important for the local.
That would be nice to keep all the beaches free and clean for anyone to go and relax and not commercialize. It would be a great thing, but once things have gone so bad, I don't know how.
No, the question is this, I will ask you, you are right, but question is suppose, how you see the future of the beach if it is left without any service provider? Anyone if, certain, you know, the aspects of sanitation, garbage removal are taken care of? We, what we call as business as usual scenario, how you see the future of Miramar beach after five years?
I don't talk about it in point, I think, you know, much more tourists, much more people will visit the beach when it is a plain, pristine, green beach just for you to like, that's what we want.
No, but you see that none of the, none of the ecosystem or for that matter, except Westengard, small, pristine, that is a wrong word. Nowhere, nothing is pristine in this, Miramar beach also is heavily polluted. The sand dunes also are covered by weeds and various types of constructional debris, that is, has been going on for years. So there is no such thing called fish line or what is.
Stop that, even construction debris, I don't say that people have no right to throw the thing. Now there again, the authorities and enforcement comes into play. Because we, we can't just allow builders to keep throwing their construction debris there. The fault is with the Panjim Municipal Council, we have not identified the ground for dumping debris.
So what do you expect PMC to do in this, in this case, Miramar beach?
As far as debris is concerned, the PMC has to identify a ground, which now they're working on to identify a place. Then there maybe a check would be kept to see who is dumping debris, if that's the person, find the person. Because, but once you are, if you are not, a ground is not identified, where will the person go to dump also? So they'll come at night and dump it, not only on Miramar beach, into the mangroves, all this is happening. Even in Nehru, people are, so it's not only PMC, even the Panjshad should identify grounds where this debris should be thrown. Once debris goes from there, if the beach is kept clean, now the only problem is toilets and we have to think of that way, Dandor and Iwon is concerned because they have a problem. But even by having a service provider, this problem will not be solved.
You mean they are using the beach for defecation?
Yeah, many of them.
Because there are Muslim shavjalehs or any such community.
Now they have got within theirs, now what I've noticed in Dandor is every person there who owns a house has rented out one, two rooms. Yeah, the village, Dandor village, yeah.
Up to CMC?
Next to CMC, yeah. Yeah, Dandor village, they have rented out.
That is a fishing beach, means fishing.
They have rented out their house, rooms of their houses to carpenters and they may have one toilet, but then all people can't use that one toilet, so some of them use it there. Once when the cops had gone there to catch them, they all ran to some other place to defecate. So it's not, you know, just catching them is not a thing. We have to look into that problem and provide toilets for all those people there.
Just minute, please, Pinto normally brought forth the issue of the lack of simple public toilet facilities for the population close to the beach. We have CMC hotel and suggested that people are forced to defecate on the beaches because not suggested that, observed that, just make a correction, observed that people are forced to defecate on the beaches because, because of lack of these facilities leading to unhygienic conditions on the beach, isn't it? So you want to connect these aspects of dirtiness on the beach and all to the interline population, which is forced to use the beach. So it has to be connected to the interline population. Anything else you want to say?
No, I wanted to ask regards drainage, our drains have been further destroyed with this, I know, when you used telecom.
Where exactly is this?
This is Altula, and then there are different places in Panjim where they are destroyed. So you know, I think they will be flooding in the city even this time, even more than.
No, I understood your point and I think there is, there are no two opinions about it, irrespective of the consideration of the beach. The point which has to be observed, the committee strongly feels that the concerns expressed by councillor Patricia Pinto regarding the connection between the watershed of Altinu, isn't it, at higher ground? Connection between the watershed of Altinu at higher ground and the drainage of the low lying areas as well as ill maintenance or non-maintenance of the drainage system which has outfall in the Miramar beach area. Most of these, I think, drains from Miramar, Kampal beach area, presumably the water goes to the sea through either the Santhinaskri or through the cross streams.
Even direct into the river, right from the.
From Shabda Mand.
No, the outlets are right from the Panjim post office to the Mandavi river and then you have even outlets, Karanzale area.
I will have to restrict myself as I said that, only to this stretch, because you see my mandate is very limited.
I'm not to show how many, but there are six outlets now, they might be wanting to go.
But your plan shows, you know, that alternative drainage pattern.
No, this is Panjim, but Karanzale I have got the outlets separate, this is Panjim, I mean, I don't have the one which I have to. Karanzale, I think I have prepared one, but I know where the outlets are. They have all been blocked, but in fact, like, there was one which we had to open last year because one of the builders had, is that, filled it with mud, that was the original outfit.
No, the committee suggests, this, I will land the testimony here, the committee suggests that this Pinto should join a beach inspection, which would be carried out further in the presence of officers. I will let you know about that. Committee's observations, your observations as well as the solutions or proposed solutions even by the officers, those who are in a position to join that inspection walk, I am suggesting an inspection walk from Kampal up to Martin Beach corner in one of the evenings, it will take not less, around two hours.
What do you call the town planning PDA?
Yeah, those means, the committee is that it's level best to call these people, but.
They have to be there, because they are the ones who prepare this.
They have promised, they have separately, we have had discussions, all this is not to be recorded, what we are discussing. But I am just giving you a feedback so that the committee is in a position to do justice to all these aspects of the beach management. Please, so you have made any, written a presentation?
Yes, we have made.
Mister advocate Irish Roddings appearing for the manish miss Devika Sikera. Testimony begins.
Mister chairman, on the last occasion, we had raised the preliminary objection, which we have not received a reply. Our contention was that this project is being supported and backed by the infrastructure corporation and that in the interest of justice, any inquiry couldn't be stage managed by them. Now we expected a reply for this objection because principles of natural justice demand that if the inquiry has to be impartial, the findings and the management of the inquiry has to be impartial, the very promoters of the beach management plan couldn't be a party to this inquiry, part to the management of this inquiry. So if, if Mister Chairman can express your opinion on this, because this is in the principles of natural justice. But keeping that objection.
I can only suggest one thing.
Yes, Mister Chairman.
That the deponents or the people who give testimony should have faith in the committee. I am not under any pressure, this is my choice, this is not IDC choice, this is my choice. I could have related other places also, Yatri Nivas, Institute of Mrs. Prangasa, then Gasparyas.
No, I'm not, I'm not, we are not objecting.
There is no interference.
No, no, we are not objecting to where it is being held, Mister Chairman.
IDC has no.
The management of the inquiry, the whole management is being, is being controlled by the very promoters of the beach management scheme. Saying that, now, lot has been said and maybe this issue has been discussed in other forums also. I don't know whether the committee has noted the views of the various forums. I would like to place, place before the committee, three exhibits on views expressed on the whole scheme before to go to you. How to leave no objections? Another objection that we don't dispute.
These are published in local newspapers?
Local newspapers. There was a discussion, open discussion on the very scheme last week in the city of Panjim, wherein overwhelmingly, the whole audience strongly demanded that this whole scheme be scrapped. And if today, the, the response to this hearing is not as was at the last meeting, was because people do not have faith, since this whole thing is being managed by the corporation which is promoting the scheme.
No, you, just, please speak a bit, relevance to the beach management.
No, I'm speaking very relevant.
Observations will not be recorded, what you have made, which are no relevance to the committee's work.
Mister Chairman, you have also.
And one more thing that these newspaper reports differ in the various versions.
Yes.
Elry Disar against, the committee would like to know from the renowned advocate, as far as Elry Disar against one newspaper report, whether this is National Institute of Smograkis official opinion or Elry Disar's personal opinion?
He has, yes.
No, what is, what is your assessment?
My assessment is that he is the director of the NIO, he has expressed his opinion.
But is it his personal opinion?
Sorry?
Is it his personal opinion?
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I, we just requesting, now, you as a person, you have expressed your opinion also in favor of this beach management. So, so, so you today, you as a chairman have a right to run this.
Committee would like to hear one point and the members of the press present here should record it, that this committee has not gone to press on this issue. And the press or a section of the press which has reported has realized its mistake. That section of the press never met the committee and they have refused to publish the clarification but on email delivery. They have identified and they have, they have said that they have done the mistake. Clarification was not published, I could be very specific also on this. This is regarding the Times of India Bangalore thirteenth December and that was just fabricated piece of journalism. And the clarification was seen, but because of some departmental problems, they have not carried the clarification. So the committee stands by this position, the committee knows it's mandated, it will go by its mandate, it will be fair, it will appear fair and no prejudgment should be done by the honorable citizens. And no, no, no views have been expressed to the press, no position has been taken.
I was, I was referring, I was referring to the article written by your chairman in a local newspaper, saying that your chairman was of the view that this scheme was a very good scheme. This, this article has appeared in the Naveen Times, in your regular column, written by your chairman, saying that this scheme was good, so how can.
My chairman, he is my.
No, no, but you, chairman of the committee, you as an individual, before being appointed on this committee, have expressed your views.
Before, you see, before being appointed on the committee, whatever my views, they do not influence the mandate that is given by the.
Okay, if your chairman feels so, but that is just the objection, because your views, even if they were expressed before you being appointed as a chairman.
No, I said that basically the fault lies here with the prejudging.
Okay.
No future will be prejudiced. It's fair, you know, that you are casting aspersions, as I said last.
No, I'm not casting aspersions, I am just bringing with due respect to the expertise your chairman has in this area. You know, as a citizen, in the interest of natural justice, I am just raising the sword. Now, now coming to the objections that we have, your chairman has just referred that there is no pristine. Now, the pristine word doesn't come from us, the pristine word comes from the very document. Now, we, our contention is that you cannot maintain the pristinity of whichever way you describe it, of a beach, by trying to manicure a beach and by trying to change the very concept, the very way this beach has been kept over the years. Now referring to the suggestion, whether there could be a separate policy for Miramar and a different policy for other beaches. What has, what is the unfortunate state of the other beaches is a matter of recall. Now, it is our submission that your chairman be kind enough to suggest to the government in your report that it is heightened that certain beaches be kept away from tourism, certain beaches be kept for the people of this land. Now, Mister Chairman, if I could also state that today if we visit some beaches in the extremes of Goa even, at Morchi, if we go to Palole, these beaches, the foreigners settled in these beaches resent the locals even visiting these beaches. Now, is it not unfortunate that beaches of our own land, we are denied, you know, the very privilege of resting on a beach? Now, Miramar is a very unique beach and it has to be kept the way it is. Now, another objection we have that this concession agreement doesn't say the proposed duration of the concession. And as you know and as everyone knows, the beaches are public properties. We cannot be made to pay to enjoy any public property. Now there is a very clear ruling of the High Court that, and I feel that it filed by the government, that no commercial activity, yes, you know, and that is.
You are referring to the cleanliness, the judgment on the cleanliness of the.
No, 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 of any commercial activity.
Director of prison.
Yes, no, no, that is.
You please give the specific reference.
Petition number.
Please take down.
Petition number fifty-five of nineteen ninety-nine. The government has given an undertaking to the punky bench of the Bombay High Court that no commercial, no cultural, social, so it's not just the cleanliness, that no cultural, social or commercial activity would be permitted. Now I, I would like, before the session is over, that your chairman rule on that point, because the point of the management of this very inquiry is very critical to the public having a faith that this thing is very independent, in that sort. We have no doubt about the independence of your mind, but you know, there shouldn't be a stigma that this whole thing is stage managed and that the government would go the way it like. Finally, I would request that this beach be kept the way it is and the people of Goa should be able to release their stress on the beaches and Mister Chairman, at, at the conclusion of this inquiry, you and we all should be able to walk freely on the speech.
I have certain questions.
Yes.
Are you rushing to the.
No, no, I thought I was crossing your five minutes. Yes, please.
Suppose the citizens overwhelmingly reject this proposal, understood? Under the business as usual conditions at Miramar beach, we all agree, let us not dispute about it, that it is relatively less stressed, open, aesthetically, you know, it's like a beautiful piece of landscape between two caves, Agwada and this. If business as usual activity goes, you know, that what will be the future as you see? This is a sort of, you know, hypothetical question, but a scenario is here to build. Business as usual, like me, government suspend or government just dumps or government, you know, decides that no decision may be taken. There are many scenarios possible, including the scenario which you depicted that committee submits the report but no action is taken but government bulldoze this public opinion and go ahead with their own idea. All possibilities are there, committee's work will be over as per the mandated job. But business as usual, let us take the position of business as usual, like the dumping of the debris, logging of the drainage and also the general apathy of the citizens themselves, as I could tell you that, what is a beach for the citizen, it is just a part that they use. But the Miramar beach is a continuous beach from the medical college to Cabo. I would like your learned opinion as a citizen and concerned, you know, the person representing the journalist Devika Sikera, that we have cases like this. This is dumping of raw sewage on the Kampal beach, which is exchanged on Miramar beach further. There are many important issues like this, so business as usual, that is in spite of all this committee's work and all this, logging of the drain near Balkhav, dumping of the garbage behind Marriott, destruction of the cross drains behind Calai Academy. These photographs will be taken on record, one by one later. Then the bus traffic, if there is a collision, the oil spillings spoil the beach and in relation to other observations such as, this is the condition without any privatization, any service provider of the Kalangut Kandalim beach. You have one snapshot picture that Kalangut Kandalim beach, business as usual. No government interference in private water sports activity, neither the bad features sprawled on the beach. So government just stops reforms, says that people don't want it, let the business as usual continue. What is the solution? Five years hence, what could be the picture? I mean, it's purely hypothetical, you may or may not choose to answer, that you want committee to think.
Any question, now, your first statement that the committee would finish its report, but the government may bulldoze a report and go ahead.
All possibilities are. All possibilities are.
I, I could be very, very sure because the government has made very clear that it would go by the report of this committee. Because the government is on the record, so if this committee carries in its report the views of the citizens and the views of the experts. You could be assured, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the government would not bulldoze this. Now the.
Business as usual scenario.
Yes, the business as usual scenario. Now, as said by our councillor also. That the tourism department has failed in its duty, the municipality till today has failed, now the municipality is trying. Now, fixing these problems, privatization or the beach management is no solution. So my only request is, if the authorities have failed, we have to make sure that those problems are fixed. We can't have a tourism department there which has an obligation to keep the beaches clean. We can't have a Panji municipality there, you know, which has an obligation and it's not doing its job. So, the, the solution to your question would be to ensure that these departments who have an inherent duty. You know, to maintain these places, do their job the right way. And this committee should also suggest to government that there has to be a coordination between these departments. There has to be a coordination and to ensure, because there is no point comparing because the damage, the damage done over the years. To other beaches like Kalangut, Baga are irreversible. So, let us limit ourselves to Miramar Beach and see by making sure the authorities act. And all these problems, including the problems of the piles of bottles lying around, are fixed. Beach management will not be a solution.
Committee would like to, like the learned advocate to go through, the interim suggestions given to municipality and give the commits. Please, take your time.
In fact, in fact, has this Panji municipality been consulted over this speech management?
I can't comment on that. Whatever committee has observed, it has been brought to the notice of the concerned authorities.
Mr. Chairman, can I just consult with them for a minute?
In fact, in this case, the Panji municipality should have been acting on its own, even before, you know. In fact, I think the, uh, new council has been very proactive in trying to find solutions to this problem and, uh.
No, my this one, this is just, you know, the temporary, just because committee has been there, committee has applied the mind that, you know, the some sort of, you know, semblance of coordination. But I am telling you, business as usual after five years.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, my suggestion, my suggestion to your chairman would be to kindly consider proposing to the government. That since we are concerned.
You dictate what you want to propose.
I would propose that this committee suggests to government and propose to government that since we are limited to this Miramar Beach. That in the interest of the beach and in the interest of the people using that beach, that a committee reform with the local councillor, local citizens, concerned citizens. You know, to decide in which way, you know, the pristinity of this beach could be maintained. I think if this committee of residents, including the councillor, work together and work in conjunction with the various authorities. You know, all these problems could be a matter of the past.
That you think is the solution?
That is the solution.
Thank you. That you record is advocate Irish, representing for Delica Situra, opening the recommendation to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For extension, so please begin your testimony. This is Mr. Carlos Gracias, South Goa Public Interest Action Group. You have sent the details of this, of this barriers of this, yes, yes, then please begin your. You have referred to the beach management project, so please begin your testimony.
Our first point is that G S I B C should get involved into more important issues than getting to Miramar Beach. Because the beaches in Goa are already catching a good revenue from tourism, as they say in that bag enough alone. But on the other hand, if there was to be a leading project for, for the beaches, I think Baina would be an ideal example to start with. Now coming to the specific points. In the introduction, uh, the name of the project is Miramar Beach Management Project. However, in the, in the introduction, it says that the purpose of the project relates to beach stretches and relieving them of the waste. Why is the, why is the touran being used? We don't understand because Miramar Beach is only one stretch, why is the touran being used? If there's some confusion in the mind of the trust man. Then he talks of, uh, solution to the menace of drowning of innocent visitors. The government seems to be portraying itself as very saintly and caring, but also is admitting its importance to provide lifeguards to save innocent visitors. It also talks of bringing order to effervescent wild vegetation. We feel that the experts should be consulted before irresponsible language is used. It also talks of more environment friendly form of development. This commendable objective is totally contradicted by the actual proposals in the project like cycling and jogging track, skywalks, view towers, water sports facilities. Whoever is drafted the project is probably not aware that a jogger's track has just been completed at Alkino. And that water sports facility is already, as you said on Apollo, apart from the fact that there is a proposed National Institute of Water Sports next door, which anyway is being objected to. On the other hand, even if a joggers or cyclist's track was contemplated, wouldn't it be, uh, made next to the road instead of being on the beach? Then there is some mention of form of development which does not carry the burden of the past. We would like to know what is this burden of the past? Then we come to the key features of the project. It starts by saying that the project takes into consideration the culture and tradition of Goa. We would like to know from the government of Goa, which beach in Goa, in which beach of Goa, there exists cycling or jogging tracks, making that our culture and tradition. View towers, skywalks. Then it says that the structures could be allowed, which are permitted in the CRZ zone. To our mind, CRZ does not permit any permanent structures on the beach. So how can the project manipulate anything on it? Then we come to services and facilities offered by the project. Uh, at the outset, it talks of Miramar Beach promenade, but this promenade has not been described anywhere. I mean, there's no description, what is this promenade? Then under A two, it says that the service provider will manage public access. In what way is this public access when we manage, we would like to know. It also says that it will manage traffic management. The only road section under the project area is the Miramar circle. So is it implied that the traffic only at the Miramar circle will be managed by the service provider? Does it make any sense? Then it talks of landscaping. Uh, we would like to know whether this landscaping will be left to the discretion of the service provider or will they have to follow plans laid out by the government? Under B three, there's a mention of lawn mowing. Are lawns being contemplated? Will these add to the pristine quality of the beach and suit the culture and tradition of Goa beaches? And the C five talks of provision of proper access roads to the beach. Uh, now in the plan, there's only one parking area shown and that is abutting right on the beach. So, why do we, why is this talk of access roads to the beaches? It looks like the trust man has not, I mean, there's some confusion.
Here is this point, it is very much which, parking, this one we mentioned. You have got the map or something?
Yeah, I know.
Parking is indicated in pink there.
Parking is, yeah, correct.
Right, day parking.
Yeah, which is right next.
That is beyond the sand dune, close to the, close to the road.
Yeah, sorry, it's on this. Right next to this.
It is on the beach side.
My mind is this one.
Yeah, it is beyond the sand dunes towards the road. No, we have carried, the committee has carried out an inspection of the beach. You mentioned, you are mentioning that point, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Proceed.
No, I think you're, you're talking about this one.
No, no, the same one. It is on the beach side, you are not wrong, it is on the beach side, but it is not on the beach, it is beyond the sand dunes to the road.
Yeah.
There already, you know, that road widening strip is there. I mean, it is a paddy field right now. It's called a paddy. Proceed.
Then under D three, there is talk of movable dune walkovers. We would like to know whether it is done the same as the skywalks. Uh, it's built the culture and tradition of Goans to walk to the beach through the dune vegetation with little paths which are free of vegetation. So we don't see how, I mean, the walkovers, first of all, how they talk of maintaining pristine quality. Walkover is something like we see in Baywatch, you know, the programs. Then we come to the monitoring and, monitoring mechanism and controls. We feel that establishing an independent monitoring authority and a dispute resolution committee seems like making mountains of a, of a bowl hill. It seems a small project and then you, you establish a monitoring authority, then dispute resolution. But all said, we are not against privatization of the services as the industrialists specifically talked about, as we discussed last time. We feel that the government should build and then privatize.
Government should?
Should build the infrastructure, say the bay parking, toilets and other, and then call for tenders to privatize. We feel that, that they should not be left to the service provided to period, because there'll be a lot of confusion. Since the first notification regarding the project, there has been so much opposition from the public to the press that the government by now should know the final.
Need to ask you certain questions. You made a specific reference that government should build and should not privatize, would you elaborate?
We are not private.
No, 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 the question here is that privatization means different things to different people. Some people privatization means privatization of the beach means no access to the beach, that is one interpretation. Another interpretation is privatization means, you know, throw it open like Kalangut and Kandolim, leave it to the people, let them put sheds. Let the water sports, either there is some regulation or there is no regulation. So it is free for all situation, privatization. Private party is doing whatever they want. Government just takes expected as pollution or maybe law and order security. Third one is, you see, mentioned about some previous deposition here in front, before the committee. Would you be specific about connection between that and this?
Yeah, we are talking about.
I mean, you are, you mentioned about, uh, Mr. Gracias mentioned about, uh, give a reference of. Testimony of Mr. Vincent Argu.
Victor.
Victor Argu, engineer Victor Argu. Would you, in what way is, uh, testimony is connected to your argument?
No, we agree with this, I mean, we felt that his deposition was very clear and very precise. It's something like at the airport, I mean, he even mentioned this example, they have a parking area which is privatized, I mean, it is given to a contractor. He pays so much to the authorities and recollects the parking. So we are talking of the same thing, the parking could be privatized in that way. The toilets should be built and then like so lots of other privatized, run by private people. So that's all you need. Like for example, cafeteria also should be built. We don't want that the, the service provider should be made to build and, you know, because then there'll be. It'll be too vague and too wide, uh, plan which will end up in litigation.
So you differ on the perception of, you know, the one basket exclusively for the service provider. I mean, monopoly and politic.
No, no, he could take the services of all things, of the parking, of the toilets, of the cafeteria, but he should not build and. The project should not involve building of the facility.
And the service provider should not monopolize the operation of the construction, the, I mean, right from construction to operation, maintenance and charging fees and. I mean, one single party, that is your objection.
Yes, but we are not against one single party. We are against the idea of building, of, I mean, the building being part of the project. The building should be done by the.
The objections are exclusively to the single constructions which are shown in the report, which are likely to come.
Yeah, yeah, so we are.
Also to walks and landscaping and which you expect as per, uh, brief, uh, project brief, the service provider is going to undertake.
Yes.
That you feel that government should.
Should build and, of course, we are against all those single skywalks, it's not right now.
So you are selective, you are selective about the facilities like bay parking, cafeteria.
Yeah.
But don't you think that, as you said, that CRZ doesn't allow any type of construction? A bay park means leveling of the land, asphalting the land.
Yeah.
It might also involve some anormality. Have you concerned, considered that? I mean, the leveling of land, reclaiming of the low lying land, may be damage to sand dunes.
Whatever comes within the existing laws, if whatever is permissible, that only that can be done.
Because, because the entire beach management project, if you see the map, please refer to the map. And please refer to this O D P also here, this unique O D P, understood? That one, the map that you have is small part of this.
Yeah.
Okay, we are referring there, just open the map and see. You see that the services will be provided in this small strip around one point seven kilometer, whereas the beach is continuous beach from Kampal to. This now because of constructions and some canals, we think that Miramar Beach is only this beach. That is not true, there are seven different beaches up to Cabo. Okay, now, we are focusing only on this one point seven kilometer stretch for which the project is being prepared. And now, there are two divisions, seaward side and land, landward side. You have mentioned now some support for certain activities and no support for other activities. Now, all these activities, including the projected constructions or development or landscaping, they are all going to come in this green skivvage, understood? Which is on the seaward side, I mean, of, next to the road, understood? And beyond there is a strip of sand dunes and then you have line of vegetation, of sand dune vegetation, flora and all that.
That is on the level.
So, in your assessment, and with correction to what you said that Alukar has said, I mean, advocated something. Uh, you feel that, that particular part doesn't come into CRZ because you said that CRZ doesn't allow any constructions. So, bay, bay and parking, asphalting, land leveling is not part of a land development?
No, no, I think you're not getting it. The point is that we are talking of whatever is permissible within the existing laws, that.
Privatization is not permissible under existing laws, service provider.
That are CRZ laws.
No, no, I mean, government wants to, you know, that fully privatize, is it not permissible under their laws?
But we are against, we are against that. So what I'm saying is that whatever is permissible under CRZ, only that anyway is going to be allowed. Nothing that is not permissible by the CRZ can be allowed. But that should not be left to the service provider to build and then operate. It should be built by the government and then made to operate by service provider.
That is, that is very different with other objections.
No, no, but also coming to this thing that you have mentioned, that for some people privatization means no access to beach. I think, I mean, that is totally illogical and we should not even entertain this point.
Project wasn't to mention that, but of course, these valid objections and concerns are there and committee has noted those concerns.
About Kalangut, uh, people, uh, operating private enterprises, that also is not a definition of privatization. And that, those things should be controlled by.
No, that's why that we have been constantly discussing that suppose business as usual, conditions, uh, operate, nothing happens, means. Forget about this beach management project. What is the position of this beach? In view of your experience in South Goa, beaches of Kolwa and other which are congested, stressed, all the beach ruins and lot of garbage, understood? There is to a solution.
Yeah.
If service provider is not a solution, the citizens who are taking objections, they have to give some ideas, some solutions, what they think best.
No, we have given a solution that the government should build and then private.
Would you still want the government role to come there?
Yes.
What about the role, what is the role of the BMC or Panji Municipal Council?
Government through the agencies like BMC or whoever is in charge.
So you want to break, you want, you need the government to again, you know, supervise and coordinate these operations.
Yes.
So where is the role?
Something like, let's say, doubling airport.
Yeah.
Even though it is a private contractor, doesn't mean that the authorities of the airport don't have a supervision over the bay parking and see that it's in proper condition.
Basically, don't you think that the whole concept of day parking or cafeterias is basically revenue generation?
Yes.
Or what is revenue likely to be used? What is the need?
Improvement of, of the condition of that.
That is an argument you would like to advocate.
Yeah.
That the revenue generation should be there and right now there are no funds, that's why beach should be, uh, beach, beach cannot be maintained. I mean, there is a problem with government according to your assessment, that revenue crunch or. that revenue crunch or resource crunch is that, that's why this idea of service provider has come up? Or are there alternatives according to you?
Of course, the first alternative is the government itself doing it. But we feel that the government should not be involved in any services. All services should be privatized. I think that's the general trend all over the world. The government is getting out of services, all services are getting privatized. And we feel that the same could be done here, but not as the project contemplates by letting the service provider build. We don't know whether he is going to build according to his own plans or whether those plans are going to be sanctioned by the government. So, there's going to be a lot of scope for litigation. So, we should reduce the scope of privatization.
You say this only for the beach under consideration or you exclude other beaches? Or you want to include other beaches?
All the beaches.
You feel that uniform policy should be there?
Yes.
Any comment? Thank you. Don't, they are very, very serious. Could you just come here, put up the chairs? I don't know. Not hearing as such. Copy of an interim small report. I would have to excuse you because if we have people joining for public hearing, in that case, we will have to suspend this, this impromptu press meeting. Okay, I'm just giving the feedback to the media. Let me clear, let me be very clear on one single point that one man committee has not approached any press and has, since the date of appointment, made any representation or any type of opinion so to, you know, influence the outcome of this. I have not taken any position. People have still represented and objected, but that is not correct. Clarifications have been sent to a section of press and they have not carried out because of their internal problems. But they have acknowledged it and the pressing question here is Times of India Bangalore edition. Watson concern also has been informed electronically. And because of some difficulties, the clarification has not been published. I don't wish to comment beyond that. So, the committee has not made any opinion known to any section of the press. Because the matter is not yet final and matter is still under consideration and study and scrutiny. The one man committee also would like to very clearly state that this is not a statutory public hearing, but just probably an experiment by the state government. Initiating process to get better and better public inputs. Thirdly, the one man committee has got full freedom and just using the G S I D C as a license office. There is absolutely no interference in the one man's committee's work by any politician, either the minister, chief minister or cabinet. There are no instructions influencing the outcome of the committee. There is no burden, there is no pressure by the government side or the project proponents or consultants. Thirdly, the one man committee did its best after a desktop survey and electronic survey to frame appropriate rules to conduct public hearing. And in consistent with these rules, we have got so far good cooperation from the members of the public. These rules were based on European as well as American public hearings in counties and states, that is the only knowledge available about conducting public hearing. Although the one man committee would like to state that still may have lapses or gaps which could be rectified in future by the government in consultation with NGOs. In consultation with NGOs to frame statutory rules for the entire process of public hearing on any project which will necessarily have public response. Which will necessarily have public response. The one man committee has also scrutinized the critical opinion about the whole process of public hearing under Environmental Protection Act nineteen eighty six for scheduled projects which, which need an environmental impact assessment. There is a huge scope for reforms in terms of transparency involvement of informed civil society and the necessary feedbacks under the statutory hearing. So, the one man committee respects the public opinion and suggestions regarding the process of conducting public hearing and would request the NGOs and learned members of the public to separately take up this issue.